Order. First item is roll call.
Alderman Bass.
Here.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Stratton. Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman West.
Next time the invocation led by Gerald Jones of Crossroads Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance from Alderman Cleveland.
Let's pray together. You are a good, good father and we're so thankful. Uh, first of all that you created us. You gave us uh, this, this wonderful incredible place to live. Uh, you breathed life into us. Uh, and you give us opportunity each and every day to reflect and mirror the majesty of our making. So we're thankful for that today and God I pray that tonight, uh, as our leaders, our administrators, our elected officials, city staff conduct business, uh, on behalf of our community, you give them wisdom and discernment. Uh, God it wouldn't be just for uh, the, the next coming days or just for the present. Uh, but you would give them foresight for the future, uh, and uh, and wisdom and uh, just help as uh, as they lead our community. God give us unity, uh, as a community, uh, as we go forward. Pray it all in the name of Jesus.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation on the ground and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next time is approval of the agenda.
Just two uh, changes, Mr. Mayor. I need to add an executive session before new business, uh, subsection one. So that'll be uh, legal actions, uh, it's statute uh, six ten dot zero two one subsection one. And that will be right before um, right before new business. And then uh, as you're looking at the liquor license approval list, we need to add the Grain Valley Partnership, uh, under that, that license list. And those are the only two changes that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I will entertain a motion then to make those changes to the agenda. Mr. Alderman West, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Reverend Headley. Any discussion? No, no, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All post same side. Agenda is amended. See no proclamations and we'll move on to citizens' participation. We ask the citizens to come forward to the podium or microphone and please give your name and address for the record. Do you have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening?
Yes. Robert Delatt, my daughter lives at twelve ninety-four Phelps Drive in Grain Valley. I'm here about a water problem with a, a drainage system draining all into her backyard. As you can see on number, page one, there's two retention ponds. And at the orange, there's a storm drain. Everything, the storm drains and the pond drain into my daughter's backyard. Nothing out there. Page two, kind of upside down, all the businesses from above. She's getting all the water from the street, the businesses and parking lots because it's all downhill. Going to page three. Uh, I got a, a text from uh, Bob Headley, which he got it from Ken Murphy. Of the sewer drain system that is supposed to be behind my daughter's. And after I did a check with a radio, stuck it in the storm drain. Everything from the storm drains and ponds dumped into my daughter's backyard. And if Patrick Martin wasn't not out there when he did. Page four and five show this pond and this pond goes back behind the building. The size of this pond and water. I wondered whether it, could it break this pond levy? And all this water would go downhill to my daughter's townhouse. And the amount of water here would take out the townhouse. And if Ken Murphy, I mean uh, Patrick Martin, on page seven, that's how the storm drain was. I don't see how all that water from uh, this pond, which is just coming out the parking lot and from behind it. It would flood at her place and four other townhouses beside it. I would love to see you guys go ahead and connect these pipes from the storm drain, which is picture nine. You got two storm drains, a twenty-eight and a twelve inch that dump into her backyard. This coming from all the storm drains and the pond. Everything, all the water is coming to her backyard. And if we didn't get it fixed, what we did, and on page ten shows what it, from one rain, all this rock came down and covered up most of the uh, storm drain. Bob Headley came out on his day off, Memorial Weekend, and we swam it out. So I would like for the city to do is go ahead and connect these drains to a sewer system. Back to page uh, three. A storm drain going to, down to BB, which shows on three A that it goes down. And there's other cul-de-sacs that show a yellow line that it's supposed to be connected to the drain system. What happened to this drain system? I'm going to take my daughter's properties and her life. Because if this pond gives away and the Good Morning America this morning, house in Missouri, six inches of rain in six hours, it washed the house away. In Missouri. Had it done probably just to get on world news, on Good Morning America. And uh, I see after uh, on three A, after I told everybody that I can hear a radio through all the drains. It's all definitely in her backyard. Three storm drains, two ponds, they fill up. So I was wanting to know if we can go ahead and connect those pipes to this storm drain and do something about that pond where it drains off somewhere else.
It must say that you have a meeting with the city staff on Wednesday, I believe. I think they'll talk about, talk about everything then, if my understanding.
Yeah, uh, Steven called me today and was wanting me to set up for Ken Murphy.
Yeah.
And I had no clue what he wants to talk about. I just thought
Well, I should have talked about this, is what, I mean they're starting to talk about what you brought forward here.
Well, I was wondering if recorded, I don't know if anybody's meeting recorded this.
Yeah, all of our meetings are recorded and put on, on there.
Recorded because I would like to see this storm drain put in. I sold the pipe road across a thousand dollars. By the city official. So why can't we just go ahead and fix this correctly? I read your sign out there on the wall. That you guys are here for the people, the causes of sewers and everything else that was on the uh, bike you guys got up there, but you're going for a water park. So can we see about getting it?
Well, I mean, that's what the meeting is about, Wednesday that you're having, the staff will talk to you about what's going on there and try to come up with a solution for that. I mean that's, and then they'll make the recommendations and back to this board. If there's something that we need to vote on to through. Because there may not even be anything this morning to through.
Oh, okay. But everybody agree that uh, a lot of drains should not be carried.
I'm not an engineer, so I would not be able to give you a good answer for that.
Well, I mean
Who's the developer?
Uh.
Uh, it was like back in two thousand one, wasn't it? Yeah.
Yes.
So I don't
Nah.
Yeah.
Because I think the developer should, what's on, what's on in three A? Nothing good. That should be completed. I don't know where all of your other waters that coming from these two townhouses are coming from that he has on uh, three A. Your storm drains here, where is it going? Storm drains in there.
Well, that's what the staff I think is looking into and they'll be able to answer those questions for you on Wednesday because I'd, I don't know, I mean that's, if it's there or not, I mean, I don't know, they'll, and I don't know if they've got all those answers yet or not, but they will for you on Wednesday.
He had to pull up this, on page three, he has pulled this up.
They will be able to tell you on Wednesday, I
Because I had to talk to him way back from the start. He needs to know that the completed drain system and no way that pond's going to give away. Is there a possibility that this pipe is getting away?
I guess.
Is there a possibility?
I'm not an engineer, so I wouldn't be able to tell you.
So there is a possibility.
I have no idea.
So if it does go away, it's taking on her townhouse and if she's there, it could kill her. That amount of water, it turns down and it kills. And you have pictures in there.
How did the drain work this week, this, this, we had two significant rain events?
Down or Saturday night, it was going out around the rocks. And I tried to take a video because the flashes wouldn't set effective, but I was buried out, the air guys were calling, I was holding a spotlight up. Little side light, maybe bigger. I thought I'd have it, but I didn't.
But it was raining at least.
Yeah, it was, it looks like a rock floor now.
Oh, boy.
I know. Staff has pictures of all that, I know, staff's been out there, I think you're out there today taking more pictures, so. I mean, they'll mail us, that's all that went down today. Was that last part sure? I said they'll, I, I know staff was out there today taking pictures. I believe they took some Saturday as well, or? Friday night? Friday, so they'll, I mean, they'll be able to go over all that with you on Wednesday when we meet with them.
Alright.
And then we'll go from there.
Please try to fix the pond, make it burn it out somewhere else. So we don't have that worry. And right now, I'll say it, it devalues, the way it looks right now, it could be out, devalued property. And to flood her apartment, it's responsible. See?
You have insurance?
This is a drainage problem.
You have insurance on the house, don't you?
No, flood insurance in the middle of Grain Valley in a residential area, I don't think anybody else in that uh, subdivision would have to have flood insurance.
I, I mean, I'm not for sure because again, the, the detention ponds aren't city's property, so I don't know how that works.
But you are the mayor and you can enforce then to
I may not be able to, I don't know, I mean, it is legalized and something, but it's, it approves engineered plots of two thousand one. I don't know if we can go back in and make them do anything.
Yeah, we just have to look at it. I mean, I, I, I wouldn't want to speculate at this point.
Does he uh, give the pictures?
Yeah, I saw, I saw the pictures. I, I'm not an engineer either, so I, I don't know, you know, if that's how it's supposed to look or not. Uh, so I, you know, city staff will let me know if, if, what the options are and see if there's anything you can do about it.
Yeah, guys, we're going to turn it five, Murray, helping in the city, you know, or is there anybody else, I mean, any other places in the Grain Valley that has that, this, this worse?
Could be, I mean, I don't
So he had a problem on Front Street, the water coming. And I will tell you that Public Works did an excellent job. It took them doing a lot of work.
So we can't fix, it can't be fixed then?
Well, it wasn't, wasn't as quite as bad, but it was bad. I mean
Ours is worse.
Yeah. But it was, it was, well, in the winter time, the water would come up and he, it froze. And these goofy people were running into the man's fence and tore down a, a post and didn't even bother stopping. But uh, nah, happy. We're going to get this checked on.
I hope so.
Don't forget to pick these up, you'll need it at the next meeting.
Uh, thank you very much for listening.
Does anyone else who wishes to address the board? See no move on to the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move that we accept the percentage agenda.
I have Mr. Alderman West to prepare the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Gerald Totten. Any discussion? Thank you. See no? All fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All post same side. See no previous business? And before we go to the new business, we add an executive session for items under legal. Uh, we're entertaining a motion then to adjourn to executive session. Mr. Alderman West, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Reverend. Totten? All fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All post same side, yes. Uh, is there any discussion? Okay, I didn't ask. Alright, Oliver Totten. Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Headley, Alderman West, Oliver Taylor. Alright, we'll turn to executive session. Next time is new business. We have requests approved two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty liquor license renewals for the following businesses. Yeah, purchase innovations LLC doing business as Valley Pub patio. K C General Store number twenty-two oh nine, K C General Store number twenty-eight oh eight. K C General Store number thirty-three twenty-five. Casatino's Price Chopper number three twenty-five. Discount Lickrin Smokes. Dollar General Store number ninety-five ninety-seven. Impact Motorsports LLC doing business as Valley Speedway. J Y Amigos Incorporated doing business as El Magway. Outer Belt Entertainment doing business as Whiskey Tango. El Taco Lecho, Pachina, Y Cantina and the Grain Valley Partnership.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is all of the applicants and for our review process and per the discussion that we just recently had. Uh, everyone is in compliance and I do believe that uh, it's Miss Logan and the chief's recommendation for approval.
Okay. Anyone have any, they want to talk about before we make the motion? Alright, I will entertain a motion then to approve all of those licenses unless someone with one pulled out. A motion from Alderman Headley, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Totten. Any discussion on issuing the licenses? See no, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All post same side. Alright. Approved. See no presentations or public hearings, then we'll move on to ordinances. Uh, first, first ordinance then, I will entertain a motion to bring it up for its second reading.
Mayor, I move, I move we make a second reading by title only for bill nineteen dash sixteen.
I have a motion from Alderman Headley to approve bill B nineteen dash six, or to bring up B nineteen dash sixteen for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion then on bill B nineteen dash sixteen before we bring it up for approval?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, uh, this is the second reading of Riceinger Hills, which is going to uh, be storage facility. It's currently located where uh, Charlie's Roadhouse is, kind of across the street from the Old Town Market. Uh, if you have any additional questions, Mr. Murphy can answer that.
Anyone have any questions then? I'll bring it up. I'll just back to this mail. No, we haven't voted on bringing it up yet, I, I No, okay. Okay, so all approval of bringing it up, please say aye.
Aye.
All post same side. Alright, now I'll entertain a motion to approve bill B nineteen dash sixteen, making an ordinance twenty-four sixty-nine.
Twenty-four sixty-nine?
Twenty-four sixty-nine.
Mayor, I move we accept second reading for bill B nineteen dash sixteen, making it ordinance number twenty-four sixty-nine.
I have a motion from Alderman Headley to approve bill B nineteen dash sixteen for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-four sixty-nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion then? Alright. Do we have?
Do we look read?
No, we haven't read it yet.
An ordinance approving the final plat of Riceinger Hills. Okay, just want to make sure we get that read.
That's what you were looking at me for.
Thank you.
Joe changed our process.
Yeah, I, I know, I'm unfamiliar with it, so I'm trying to learn.
Oh, okay, you're actually, okay, so this will be an ordinance approving the final plat of Riceinger Hills. The B, B nineteen dash sixteen, making the ordinance twenty-four sixty-nine. Motion second. From Alderman Headley, second, Alderman Totten. Huh, yes, I know, then we gotta do roll call too. Alright, no, there's no discussion, all of the fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All post same side, alright, we need a roll call, since second, Alderman Totten.
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman West?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alright, B five zero. Alright. Next we have item B nineteen dash seventeen. I'll entertain a motion for someone to bring it up for its first reading.
Mayor, I move we, we make first reading by title only for bill B nineteen dash seventeen.
Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Headley to approve bringing up B nineteen dash seventeen for its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Bass? Any discussion on bringing up B nineteen dash seventeen, which is an ordinance approving a standard fine schedule for the Grain Valley Municipal Court?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is just a housekeeping item for the municipal court. Uh, in order to stay in compliance with the Missouri Supreme Court Rule thirty-seven, we have to update our fines to uh, what the Supreme Court has identified as the maximum fine. On the exhibit that you'll see attached to the back, uh, you'll, you're able to see uh, what the fines that Judge Watkins has recommended that the board adopted. Um, if the board does adopt this, then we will put this into a comprehensive, uh, into our comprehensive fee schedule uh, to be approved annually and, and then we'll make, we'll make changes annually as well. Uh, the Supreme Court really kind of dropped the boom with some of the fines. They really lowered uh, what those, those fines could be. Fortunately, we were still underneath uh, the fines, so um, uh, Judge Watkins did rec, make recommendations on, on what these should be based off of her other municipalities that she works with and um, you can see those accordingly. So for uh, all of the changes that we have made, the, upon this approval, you'll see the, uh, ordinance number that's, that it's related to out to the side. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Let me see, the paper you're talking about, that one has
Give me your packet today, right behind the ordinance. Give me your paper packet. Okay, anyone have any questions then? Alright, all the fairies then to bring it up for its first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
All post same side. Alright, I'll entertain a motion then to approve B nineteen dash seventeen for its first reading.
Mayor, I move we accept the first reading for bill B nineteen dash seventeen and bring it back for its second reading by title only at our next regular session.
Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Headley to approve bill B nineteen dash seventeen for its first reading, bring it back by following for its second reading. Do I have a second? Second, Alderman Totten, this is an ordinance approving a standard fine schedule for the Grain Valley Municipal Courts. Any additional discussion? Alright, see no, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All post same side. Alright, five zero first, for ordinances. Next up, the city attorney's report.
Uh, the only thing I would mention, I think Joe has mentioned before, we do have a uh, medical marijuana seminar that is coming up this Friday uh, at NPR Independence. So if there's any, you know, city officials that, city staff that are interested that this will be appropriate for, uh, you can, we've got a brochure, you can talk to us and see if you think it would be uh, be helpful. But anyway, this Friday morning, uh, at NPR Independence.
I think we do have at least two staff members going or?
Yeah, that was actually going to be
Yeah, Mr. Murphy gave
Uh, then you're going to yank, so you're going to report back and all
Uh, yeah, so myself, Teresa and uh, Mr. Trozen are going to be going to that and we'll report back to the board what comes from that. Um, but in the meantime, we are also working um, with Labor Municipal Law on kind of getting our next steps in order. Uh, with that legalization vote, um, there's some things that the city is going to have to do, um, ordinance wise, um, to make sure that we are ready for that and have everything in line. So luckily, they um, have already started this with some other cities and have some experience, so they kind of have a uh, a roadmap for us. So we will probably actually start seeing some of those uh, changes, proposed changes brought to you at the July eighth meeting.
Ms. Rosenbaum?
I just wanted to invite everybody to the Grain Valley Assistance Council's open house this Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, at five o'clock. Um, I think we're ribbon cutting at five thirty, is that accurate? Around five thirty. Um, so just a reminder that the Grain Valley Assistance Council is in the Nichols Building that the city purchased on Greg Street. Um, about a year and a half ago approximately and is getting that building rent free from the city. And so it'd be really great if we had a good show of support at that ribbon cutting.
Alright, uh, Mr. Craig.
Good evening. Progress is continuing on the tax increment financing bond refunding. The city's financial advisor from Baker Tilly, that's formerly Springstead, is running preliminary uh, revenue models. And the city's bond underwriter from Piper Jaffrey is also preparing information and having discussions with potential investors. Um, I've also been working with Baker Tilly to fulfill the city's annual financial disclosure requirements. Uh, we've been submitting required information to the, on the city's finances and debt, to the state auditor, the electronic municipal market access exchange and the city's bond trustees. And finally, I just would like to uh, welcome Mark Trozen to the city management team. That's all that I had for my report.
Mr. Bailey?
Uh, Mayor and Board, usually this time of year, uh, I kind of give a report on our youth baseball softball uh, program. If you recall, we started the season back at the, towards the end of March. Uh, we have a great turnout for, as far as participation was concerned. I, we've actually had record numbers this spring, a little over five hundred and forty kids uh, registered in, in both baseball and softball. Uh, this current week is our last week of the season. Uh, it's been a bit of a challenging season with the weather and the rain. I think we've had just almost eighty rainouts, uh, that we've had to reschedule, uh, this season. And most of them we've rescheduled and been able to play. The goal was to get done before July one. So uh, we've all, six of our fields are humming this week and uh, then we've got a, a tournament this weekend. So I just wanted to let everybody know we've had another uh, successful youth uh, sports season and we'll uh, kick off the fall season here in, in about a month and a half.
If this happens to be your first time to meet Mr. Trozen, uh, Mark Trozen, our new community development director, has staff report for you as well.
Thank you, Ryan. You should have a copy of my report uh, in front of you. Um, just basically giving you some statistical information uh, from your last Board of Alderman meeting until last Friday. Just to highlight a couple of the items, um, uh, one thing of uh, interest, Public Works is uh, completing the pothole patching program. Um, also, all fire alarms were tested in City Hall and the community center uh, on June twentieth. And then also, if you have any other questions regarding that report, I'd be more than happy to answer that. On behalf of the uh, Community Development Department, I just want to thank the mayor and the board for their support last Thursday in regards to the Community Development Department event. That was such a wonderful evening. The weather cooperated, uh, great turnout. Um, although I don't have a good count for you, but I, I think we all could say that there were several people there that had a great evening. And thank you to uh, Sarah and all the And thank you to, uh, Sarah and all the other city staff for all their hard work, uh, in putting together that event. Um, it just was a wonderful evening, um, one that I, uh, was greatly, uh, appreciative to be a part of.
And the only thing I had was, uh, kind of already did welcome to, to the team. Uh, Mark, we're proud to have you as, as part of the team and the credibility that you lent us, so, look forward to working with you. Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next up, the four of Alderman reports and comments, Oliver Totten?
Well, I was one of the people that had a great time at the park this last week. And, uh, I'll say something, it's a shame for those that missed it. I'd also like to say thank you to all the wonderful people that have been working together on our, well, I, I call it our city, but I, my block in particular, that's how I met the gentleman for the first time. But, uh, no, I'm very happy for all the people working together. Because we've got an awful lot to be working on.
Oliver Bass?
I wasn't able to attend due to some personal obligations, but I would just like to say welcome to Mr. Trozen as well.
Thanks, Greg. I spoke at length with, uh, Mr. Trozen that night, and welcome to the team. Uh, I got two, two questions or comments, I guess. Can I get the outcome of the meeting on Wednesday with, um, Mr. Delat? And then, uh, I don't know if any of you have come from the north side in front of Price Chopper, but our favorite, uh-
Falling in?
Favorite bad spot in the road is, uh, falling apart again, so, there, it will very shortly.
Actually, the fact there was two, Ron was eating a little bit.
Yeah. Did they, did they, did he patch that last?
Yeah, um, and after, I talked about that last week, it was, um, Ryan, uh, it was actually coming down.
They actually did a Dukes of Hazzard stunt over it.
Yes, we are.
All right, Oliver West? All right, Oliver Cleaver?
Mark, welcome. I'm gonna have some reporting to tell.
All right. Uh, next up, the mayor's report. Uh, the only thing I already kind of told Ken about is, it's not even at our city limits, but Dillon Ham and Pink Hill, I mean, what the, I'm sure you guys contact that county, you can let them know. In some kind of direction, I don't know, there's something instructing of you, apparently, so, uh, good. Welcome aboard, glad to have you on. Uh, I don't have anything else, and I don't believe we have a need for any additional executive, executive session, correct? Someone has one? All right, we'll adjourn then.